Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Finance Committee meeting for January 27. We have another piece of business we need to tend to. So I would like to make a motion for Langsor City Council's Finance Committee to convene into executive session to discuss a matter which is required to be kept confidential by state statute pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G5. The Executive Committee shall include the following individuals. Finance Committee members, all council members, Council President Porter, Mayor McDaniel, Service Safety Director Woody, Auditor Nettles, Law Director Hall, and Treasurer Stotin, as well as Tax Commissioner Hamilton.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Soli.
Yes.
And I vote yes. We are now in executive session.[172.45]
Come back. I'm like, I'm this far, I'm getting glasses.
Okay. All right, I'd like to make a motion for the Finance Committee to leave the executive session and return to its regular meeting at this time.
Second.
We have a first and a second roll call. Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Schoenover.
Yes.
Mr. Solley.
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger, yes. We are now in our real meeting. The first item to present is Temporary Resolution 1125, a resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend certificate of appropriations with the county auditor and the police and fire fund 2047, coming from Safety Committee, Councilman Bisje.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Due to the unexpected retirement of former Chief Mathon, the fire department's requesting $60,000 just to fill the remainder of the payout for his retirement. We're going to request three readings on this one and go the full three readings. Councilmember Solley here is going to be my second. Chief Schultz, I don't know if you've got anything to add on top of that, but that's what's happening this evening.
Good evening. That was a great summary of the piece of legislation. Anybody want to answer any questions, if anybody has any? Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're going through readings. Any other questions, comments from council? Moving on, Temporary Resolution 1225, a resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into an agreement with Ohio Department of Transportation to purchase rock salt for the 2025-26 winter season, coming from Public Works Committee, Councilman Teener.
This is just an annual piece for salt for the 25-26 year. We always have to plan ahead to make sure we have it, especially if it's at a good price and that, so we can get locked in. So, three readings. And Mrs. Kreitz will be my second.
Thank you. Questions? Next item is Temporary Resolution 13-25, a resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for the purchase of chemicals for use by the Division of Water, coming from Water, Water Pollution Control Committee, Councilman Wing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, as most of you probably remember, an annual piece that we pass every year. And I read through the legislation and every year it says authorize the SSD to go out to bid to purchase chemicals for the water department. So, pretty simple, something we have to pass every year. We are going to go a full three readings, and I have Councilman Ailes as my second.
Very good. I see no questions, no hands. So now we're looking at Temporary Resolution 14-25, a resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for the purchase of pipes and fittings for use by the Division of Water, again coming from Water, Water Pollution Control Committee, Councilman Wing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very similar to the previous piece, except this is for purchasing, the annual purchase of pipes and fittings for the year for the water department. We'll also go a full three readings, and I have Councilwoman Teener as my second.
Very good. Temporary Resolution 15-25, a resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract for the construction of solids, of the solids handling replacement project, Water, Water Pollution Control, Councilman Wing.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to invite Denise Cruz up to speak to this one, and while she's coming up, this authorizes $11.5 million to go out to bid for the solids handling replacement facility down at Lord Street.
Good evening, and welcome to Construction Season 2025. This project is one that we've been working on probably a year and a half, and we have the project out for bid. This authorizes the contract. The current engineer's estimate is $9.6 million. We are allowed to accept bids that come in 20% over that, so that's the 11.5. We have to have this legislation to finalize our loan, so it's due to Ohio EPA by February 15th. If you choose to go through full readings on this, I'll submit the temporary ordinance and see if they'll take that in the time being. And keep your fingers crossed, we're opening bids on Friday. Hopefully they'll come in well. If they don't, then we'll be adjusting the numbers in this.
So, if council's open, well, first, any questions about the project? I think it's pretty self-explanatory. If council's open, I would request two readings on it, so that we can have everything ready to go by the loan deadline, if everyone would be open to that. And I believe Councilman Ailes is my second on this one.
Yes.
Okay. Excuse me, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Denise. Temporary Resolution 16-25, a resolution to move existing budget between accounts, appropriate from the unencumbered balance, and amend certificate of appropriation with the county auditor in the Stormwater Sauer Fund 606, 006, coming from Finance Committee. And is there any discussion you wish to make? Steve here? I didn't see you back there, so I was looking around, seeing who's the players.
Good evening, everybody. So, yeah, this legislation stems from a retirement in my stormwater department. This retirement was known when budgeting last year, and I made my best efforts to try to account for it, but unfortunately, my efforts were not good enough, and I was short in a couple of accounts. And in order to fix that and make sure we have appropriated enough funds to cover the payout for this employee who we're retiring at the end of this week, we do need to make the changes noted in the legislation. I've provided you an email with kind of a description of some of the issues there related to that, but I'm happy to answer any of the questions that may, anyone may have.
I hear no questions. Thank you. Councilman Ailes, you'll be the second.
Yes.
And we will go the three full readings. That's it for the resolutions, ordinances. First one is Temporary Ordinance 5-25, the ordinance to accept a petition for the annexation of 5.08 plus or minus acres in Pleasant Township to consent to annexation and to declare an emergency, coming from Economic Development Committee, Councilman Hoop.
This is just to accept the petition of the annexation from Pleasant Township? Do you have anything else to add, Laura?
No, ma'am. That's it. Thank you.
Okay.
And Mr. Wing will be my second. Oh, and there is a time, is it still the 21 days?
Twenty, yes, ma'am.
Twenty days?
Mm-hmm.
So, we're asking for one reading.
So, we're asking for suspension due to regulatory requirements. Thank you. Any questions? We will suspend on Temporary Ordinance 5-25. Temporary Ordinance 6-25, an ordinance pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 709.023C to provide buffer for incompatible land use subject to the passage of the annexation of 5.08 plus or minus acres in Pleasant Township and to declare an emergency, also coming from Economic Development Committee, Councilman Hoop.
Thank you. This has to do with the same annexation. It's just to provide a buffer if needed for any neighbors that have a different zoning. And I think Mrs. Kreitz will be my second. And suspension on this one as well.
Any questions from council?
Yeah, I was wondering where the buffer is. Pardon me?
What buffer?
Yeah. What kind of buffer is it? Is this a landscape buffer?
My understanding, it could be landscaping, but Stephanie.
Yes. So, the Revised Code, because it's an expedited type two annexation, it, we're on deadlines that are set by the Ohio Revised Code. So, one of the things that it requires is that when this goes to Planning Commission eventually, they'll consider whether or not they need to ask for some kind of buffer around the new property to be annexed. It's a protection for the township residents typically, you know, in case somebody's trying to put an industrial development into a residential development or something like that. In this situation, it's, it's not really a problem. They're going to ask for advanced manufacturing zoning, and they're already in advanced manufacturing district. So, we don't see it being a problem, but we're required by law to pass a ordinance that states we will ask for some kind of buffer in the event that the township residents, you know, don't want to see whatever it is they're going to put there. And the buffer would be essentially sloping of the ground, or it could be trees, or it could be a fence. It's just some kind of physical barrier to block it off in the event that that would need to be done.
And this is on the east side, or is this also facing 22 and facing 37?
Both sides. Yeah, it's a triangle there at 22 and 37.
Right. So, it's going to be all the way around this thing?
It potentially could be, but like I said, I don't think the neighbors are going to have any issue, because they're all zoned for industrial use as well.
Okay.
One of the neighbors owns, one of the neighbors is the, owns the property adjacent to it.
Blue label.
So, they wouldn't need one on the east side. So, I'm thinking the buffer is just along 22 and 37, or, yeah, whatever that is, 37?
The triangle, 22 and 37. Yep.
Okay, great. Now we know what a buffer is.
Yeah.
Thank you for asking. Next item is Temporary Ordinance 7-25, an ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into a school compensation agreement for income tax sharing between Lancaster City School District and the City of Lancaster, and to declare an emergency, coming from Finance Committee. And Mr. Solley will be my second, and we will do three readings. Law Director Hall, would you like to give a brief update on where we are on this, please?
Sure, absolutely. So, the mayor, myself, and the Income Tax Commissioner have had discussions with Lancaster City Schools over the last four months, and we think we've reached an agreement. They need to sign off on that tomorrow night before you all can pass the same agreement. So, it's set for three readings for you, and I will let you all know just as soon as I know whether or not Lancaster City School Board has accepted this agreement. Thanks.
Thank you, Law Director Hall. Any additional questions, comments? I see none. So, moving on to Temporary Ordinance 8-25, an ordinance to amend permanent, amend permanent ordinance 51-24, the management pay ordinance, and to declare an emergency, coming from Administrative Services Committee, Councilman Luchtenberg.
Yes, I'd like to ask the Service Safety Director to address this, if you would.
Absolutely, thank you. So, as you have seen over the last year, as, through attrition, I guess, I'll say, through attrition, each time a position becomes open in the city, we have been looking at the job descriptions, the roles and responsibilities. So, we've been updating job descriptions, updating roles and responsibilities, and looking at where the pay ranges currently are, and seeing if there are any adjustments that we want to make to those pay ranges. So, council approved some of those last year. You approved some of those in the budget process back in December. And so, we do have an employee that's retiring after many years of service with the city, and so, we decided to look at that position again and, and, and see if we wanted to make any changes. And so, we went through the same process that we've been going through, looking at the Clemens Nelson Study that was done several years ago, looking at other pay ranges in the city, looking at roles and responsibilities, how many people are they managing, if those employees are union versus non-union, and just looking at a lot of different factors to determine where we think the position should fall in the range structure. So, this particular position, we are looking at kind of reorganizing the department and distributing some of the roles and responsibilities a little bit more than what they have been in the past. So, we are just respectfully requesting to adjust that pay range, and we are asking for three readings.
Thank you. And Chairman Wolfinger, if you'll be my second?
I will.
All righty.
And three readings.
Three readings.
Very good. That's it for, is, for the legislation. Other discussion items, departmental updates. I see no one. Oh, okay.
Hello. I'm never the only person here to give a departmental update, so, sorry, I was kind of taken aback. I just wanted to make you all aware of one issue that my office is having currently. So, many of you know, we have subsidized the, the salary and benefits for one of our assistant prosecutors over the last 20 years with Violence Against Women Act grant funding. And we have, we've received it pretty consistently, enough that we're receiving hundreds of thousands of dollars of benefit from it at this point. It only comes $60,000 at a time. It comes with a lot of strings, a lot of statistics and things that we have to keep track of internally, but we're willing to do it, because it does pay the largest part of one of my assistant prosecutor's salaries, specifically our family violence unit prosecutor, which is a very important position in terms of prosecuting in the Fairfield County Municipal Court. And I just wanted to let everybody know that I did my, my best guesses at what, how much money we were going to get for that position this year. Typically, I find out the award in late November, early December, early January, and now we're in late January, and I still don't know how much money we are going to get this year as an award for VAWA. So, I just wanted to make everybody aware. Like I said, I tried to budget conservatively, hoping that we would get the entire $60,000 again, but, you know, it's the federal government. Unfortunately, they move at their own pace, and so, I won't know until hopefully, early February at this point, one way or the other. So, I just wanted to give everybody a heads up. We've got plenty of money, you know, to last us almost throughout the year, but I just wanted to let you know, we're having more trouble relying on that VAWA grant than we have in the past, and so, we may have to look at making some kind of adjustment in the future to ensure that that, that position is maintained. So, that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Move on to tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Chairman Wolfinger. Tonight, we have a public hearing on the annexation of 22.08 plus or minus acres in Greenfield Township. Law Director Hall, do you want to give us a little bit about what we might be expecting tonight?
Sure, yeah. This is just the public hearing, essentially, the time devoted for residents who were notified in, in the surrounding properties to come and speak to council about any of their questions, comments, or concerns. I believe the developer, yes, the developer and developers' council are both here as well. You'll probably hear from them as a proponent at the beginning, but this is a multifamily residential complex that is being proposed in Greenfield Township. You all should have a map letting you know which parcels that includes, and if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and if I can't, I'm sure they will be able to. Thank you.
Thank you. So, that's, we have the public hearing this evening and our regular order of business.
Thank you very much. Any other items for finance to be discussed or brought to the table? I hear none, see none, and I need a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Mr. Ailes?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. And it is 6:37.
The regular meeting of Lancaster City Council will begin promptly at 6:40.
The Frankie Smith Funeral Home in Crematory in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at 740-653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster and 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Great automotive service is just around the corner at the Buckeye family of dealerships, whether it's Buckeye Nissan in Hilliard, Georgesville Nissan at the Georgesville Auto Mall, Buckeye Honda of Lancaster, Buckeye Toyota of Lancaster, or Buckeye Collision Center in Hilliard. Team Buckeye services all makes and models at each location, utilizing modern practices with hundreds of years of experience, giving you peace of mind. That's Howie Buckeye.
Please rise if you're able and join me in a moment of prayer. God, grant us the serenity to accept the things that we cannot change, the courage to change the things we can, and finally, the wisdom to know the difference. I now call the January 27th, 2025 Lancaster City Council meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Scott, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes?
Here.
Mr. Bisjack?
Here.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Here.
Mrs. Hoop?
Here.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Here.
Mr. Schoenover?
Here.
Mr. Solley?
Here.
Ms. Teener?
Here.
Mr. Wing?
Here.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Present.
Please let the record reflect that all 10 members of Lancaster City Council are present. We will now move to reading and disposing of the journal.
Regular meeting minutes dated January 13th, 2025.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the journal. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We will now move to the reports of city officials.
Email dated January 13th, 2025 regarding suspension of readings on legislation submitted by President Porter. Email dated January 16th, 2025 regarding 2024 zoning review submitted by City Planner Commissioner Carter. Email dated January 16th, 2025 regarding update on AT&amp;T tariff revision submitted by Law Director Stephanie Hall. Emails within all council members dated January 17th, 2025 regarding suspension of readings on legislation. Email dated January 27th, 2025 regarding Fairfield Park presentation submitted by Mr. Solley. Email dated January 27th, 2025 regarding Utilities Commission Officer, or Office submitted by Superintendent Sherry Hance and responded by Mr. Ailes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of city officials. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We'll now move to Communications.
Email dated January 13th, 2025 regarding the requested, of a certified copy of Permanent Resolution 7-25 submitted by Mr. David Hodge of Underhill and Hodge LLC. Email dated January 17th, 2025 regarding Sheridan Road annexation and zoning approval documents submitted by Stephanie Bosco with Lancaster. documents submitted by Stephanie Bosco with Lancaster Port Authority.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the communications.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the communications. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We will now move on to special presentation and awards.
There are none this evening.
Okay, we have no special presentation awards. Any petitions and memorials?
There are no petitions or memorials this evening.
Okay, thank you. We will now move to the permission of voters and taxpayers to address City Council. Are there any individuals here this evening that would like to address City Council? Seeing none, we thank you for coming and attending this evening's meeting. We'll now move to the reports of standing committees.
Finance Committee meeting minutes dated January 13th, 2025 submitted by Mr. Wolfinger. Finance Committee agenda dated January 25th, 2025 submitted by Mr. Wolfinger. And then I have Public Works Commission meeting minutes dated today, January 27th, 2025 submitted by Ms. Teener.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of standing committees. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Reports of special committees?
There are no reports of special committees presented to council this evening.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we're going to be moving to public hearing, and we do have a public hearing this evening. This involves the annexation of 22.08 plus or minus acres from Greenfield Township to the city of Lancaster. And at this time, we will open the public hearing. As we move through this process, we would ask first that we hear from the proponents of the annexation, which was, which...
The silver.
The silver board up there that has the sign in for the name and address and information if you're speaking tonight is on the podium. So, do we have anyone here speaking in favor of the annexation this evening? Good evening. If you will sign in on the silver board and then give your name and address, and then you can begin your comments.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Seedorf. I am an attorney at Voorhees, Seder, Seymour &amp; Pease. Our address is 52 East Gay Street in Columbus, Ohio. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm joined by Joe Thomas on behalf of Metro Development. And with respect to the annexation, that is approximately 22.080 acres. That's located along the west side of Election House Road, north of Route 33. Within that 22 acres specifically, we are also looking later to this evening to rezone about 13.833 acres to, once that property is annexed, to the RM Residential Multi-Unit for the development of multifamily housing. And this, the site that we're looking to rezone is mostly vacant with a few structures located along the southern and southeastern most parcels. And the area is mostly commercial. There's a church to the west of the property. To the north, there's a mixture of commercial businesses. To the east is a car dealership. And then to the south is Route 33. And then more south than that is a manufactured home park. And so this is ideal, this multifamily is an ideal transition between those kind of single-family residential uses to the south and the commercial uses to the northeast and west. And so we've worked really closely with the city of Lancaster and the, in Fairfield County to get this over the finish line hopefully this evening. And we're happy to answer any questions you have. Joe, do you want to add anything?
I appreciate everybody's efforts. I'm Joe Thomas, Metro Development, 470 Old Worthington Road, Westerville, Ohio. Appreciate everybody's time, and I'm here for questions as far as the annexation. But just to give you some quick background, we had brought this property previously through Greenfield Township and Fairfield County. We thought the best effort was for us moving forward was to annex in the city of Lancaster. As Elizabeth mentioned, great relationship with the city of Lancaster, working through their staff on this process. And we are very interested in being in your city and working with your community. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions from council members? Hearing none at this time. Thank you for coming. Do we have any other individuals here to speak as a proponent for the annexation? Hearing none, we're going to conclude this portion of the public hearing and now ask if there is anybody here who is an opponent of the annexation to come forward and speak at this time. Seeing no individuals coming forward to speak in opposition to the annexation, we're going to now move to close this public hearing on the annexation of 22.08 plus or minus acres from Greenfield Township. Thank you for coming this evening. We will now move on to the reading of resolutions. We begin with the third reading. There are currently no third reading of resolutions. And we'll move to the second reading of resolutions, beginning with temporary resolution 4-25.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor in the wastewater replacement and improvement fund 6023 and authorize the issuance of then-announced certificates for payments of bills. This is through Water, Water Pollution Committee, and this is Mr. Wing and Ms. Teener.
Councilmember Wing.
Mr. President, this will be the second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary resolution 4-25. Now moving to temporary resolution 5-25.
A resolution to increase receipts appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate of other sources with the county auditor in the wastewater replacement and improvement fund 6023. Again, this is through Water, Water Pollution Committee, Mr. Wing and Mr. Ailes.
Councilmember Wing.
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary resolution 5-25. Temporary resolution 6-25.
A resolution to amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor appropriate from the unencumbered balance, increase receipts, and complete a fund transfer in the wastewater fund 6004 and in the wastewater utility reserve fund 6029. Water, Water Pollution Committee, Mr. Wing and Ms. Teener.
Councilmember Wing.
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary resolution 6-25. Temporary resolution 7-25.
A resolution to amend 2025 appropriation budgets and amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor. This is through Finance Committee, Mr. Wolfinger and Mr. Solly.
Councilmember, yeah, sorry, Councilmember Wolfinger. Yes.
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings. Thank you, Councilmember Wolfinger. We'll now move on to the first reading of resolutions, beginning with temporary resolution 11-25.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor in the Police and Fire Levy Fund 2047. This is through Safety Committee, Mr. Bisjack and Mr. Solly.
Councilmember Bisjack.
Thank you, Mr. President. This will be the first of three readings.
First of three readings on temporary resolution 1125. Temporary resolution 12-25.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation to purchase rock salt for the 2025-2026 winter season. This is through Public Works Committee, Ms. Teener and Mrs. Kreitz.
Councilmember Teener.
First of three readings, please.
First of three readings on temporary resolution 12-25. Temporary resolution 13-25.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for the purchase of chemicals for use by the Division of Water. This is through Water, Water Pollution Committee, Mr. Wing and Mr. Ailes.
Councilmember Wing.
First of three readings, please.
First of three readings on temporary resolution 13-25. Temporary resolution 14-25.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for the purchase of pipes and fittings for use by the Division of Water. This again is through Water, Water Pollution Committee, Mr. Wing and Ms. Teener.
Councilmember Wing.
First of three readings.
First of three readings on temporary resolution 1425. Temporary resolution 1525.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract for construction of solids handling replacement project. The Water, Water Pollution Committee, Mr. Wing and Mr. Ailes.
Councilmember Wing.
First of two readings.
First of two readings on temporary resolution 1525. Temporary resolution 16-25.
A resolution to move existing budget between accounts appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend their certificate of appropriations in the county auditor in the stormwater sewer fund 6006. This is through Finance Committee, Mr. Wolfinger and Mr. Ailes.
Councilmember Wolfinger.
First of three readings.
First of three readings on temporary resolution 16-25. We have now completed reading of resolutions and will move to the reading of ordinances, beginning with the third reading of temporary ordinance 5624.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to acquire a permanent access easement necessary to perform maintenance activities on stormwater infrastructure. This is through Water, Water Pollution Committee, Mr. Wing and Ms. Teener.
Councilmember Wing.
Mr. President, I move that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record ordinance temporarily numbered 5624.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 5624. Any discussion, Councilmember Wing?
Yes, again, this is just adding stormwater-related easements along Hardwood Drive in anticipation for the Fairfield apartment complex.
Any further discussion on temporary ordinance 5624? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luckenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Solly.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Temporary ordinance 5624 passes by 10 to 0. Temporary ordinance 57-24 star.
Now, this was a replacement for the last one, and do we have to announce that it's a star?
Okay. Do we need, do we need to go through the process of making it a star law director at this point?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we didn't do that at the last meeting because we knew you still had this meeting to go ahead and do that since the public hearing was tonight.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, do you want to read it?
Oh, yes, sir. I'm sorry.
No, you're okay.
In ordinance to amend the zoning map subject to passage of the annexation of 22.0 plus or minus acres in Greenfield Township and to declare an emergency. Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Hoop and Mr. Wing.
Councilmember Hoop.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to replace temporary ordinance 57-24 with star, 57 star dash 24. No. Is it just one star? So, we're replacing 57-24 by replacing it with temporary ordinance 57 star 24.
Fifty-seven.
Did I say that right?
Seven, 57 dash 24 star, correct?
Yes, the clerk put it on the agenda for 57 star dash 24. Typically, it's 57 dash 24 star.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Got it.
I'm sorry.
Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
We have a motion and a second to replace temporary ordinance 57-24 with temporary ordinance 57-24 star. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luckenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Solly.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Motion to replace temporary ordinance 57-24 with temporary ordinance 57-24 star passes 10 to 0. Councilmember Hoop.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 57-24 star.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 57-24 star. Any discussion?
Not at, this just is the, to amend the zoning, which we just had the hearing for, so.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luckenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Solly.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Temporary ordinance 57-24 star passes 10 to 0. That concludes our third reading of ordinances, and we move to the second reading of ordinances, beginning with temporary ordinance 1-25.
An ordinance to accept the final plat for the Fairfield Park Development. This is Code Enforcement and Zoning Committee, Mr. Solly and Mrs. Hoop.
Councilmember Solly.
Second reading, Mr. President.
Second of three reading? Okay, second of three readings on temporary ordinance 1-25. Temporary ordinance 3-25.
An ordinance to re, oh my gosh, repeal Lancaster codified ordinance part 7 Business Regulation Code, chapter 711, 715, 721, 731, 785, and 791 of the codified ordinance of the city of Lancaster. This is through Law Committee, Mrs. Kreitz and Mr. Bisjack.
Councilmember Kreitz.
Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance 3-25. That concludes second reading of ordinances. We now move to the first reading of ordinances, beginning with temporary ordinance 5-25.
An ordinance to accept the petition for the annexation of 5.08 plus or minus acres in Pleasant Township to consent to annexation and to declare an emergency. This is through Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Hoop and Mr. Wing.
Councilmember Hoop.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third readings of temporary ordinance 5-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary ordinance 5-25. Any discussion?
No.
Thank you. Please call the roll on the motion to suspend.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luckenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Solly.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary ordinance 5-25 passes 10 to 0. Councilmember Hoop.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 5-25.
Second?
We have a...
Oh, sir.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 5-25. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luckenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Solly.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Temporary ordinance 5-25 passes 10 to 0. Temporary ordinance 6-25.
An ordinance pursuant to Ohio Vice Code 709.023(c) to provide buffer for incompatible land used subject to passage of the annexation of 5.08 plus or minus acres in Pleasant Township and to declare an emergency. Again, this is through Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Hoop and Mrs. Kreitz.
Councilmember Hoop.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third readings of temporary ordinance 6-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary ordinance 6-25. Any discussion?
No, none at this time.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luckenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Solly.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary ordinance 6-25 passes 10 to 0. Councilmember Hoop.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 6-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 6-25. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailes.
Yes.
Mr. Bisjack.
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoop.
Yes.
Mr. Luckenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Solly.
Yes.
Ms. Teener.
Yes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes.
And Mr. Wolfinger.
Yes.
Temporary ordinance 6-25 passes 10 to 0. Temporary ordinance 7-25.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into a school compensation agreement for income tax sharing between Lancaster City School District and the city of Lancaster and to declare an emergency. This is through Finance Committee... and the city of Lancaster and to declare an emergency. This is through Finance Committee, Mr. Wolfinger and Mr. Solly.
Councilmember Wolfinger.
First of three readings.
First of three readings on Temporary Ordinance seven dash twenty-five. Temporary Ordinance eight dash twenty-five.
An ordinance to amend permanent ordinance fifty-one dash twenty-four, the management pay ordinance, and to declare an emergency. This is Administrative Service Committee, Mr. Luckenberg and Mr. Wolfinger.
Councilmember Luckenberg.
First of three readings.
First of three readings on Temporary Ordinance eight dash twenty-five. That concludes our reading of ordinances this evening. We do have one item of tabled legislation. I do not believe that's moving off the table at this time. We will now move to unfinished business. Any council members have any unfinished business to discuss this evening? Hearing none, new business. Any council members have any new business to discuss this evening or any members of the administration? Mayor?
Yes, Mr. President. You may have seen a press release regarding the Raze Grant, which is a federal Department of Transportation grant. It's, the acronym stands for Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity. The city of Lancaster applied for this grant last year and have been awarded a grant of eight hundred thousand dollars for a feasibility study for the east side industrial connector. We've talked about this quite a bit over the last couple of years. This would essentially connect east side industrial area, Quarry Road, Commerce Street with US twenty-two and allow connections along the route to get truck traffic essentially out of downtown Lancaster. The update I have is that, as you would expect when a new administration comes in, they're reevaluating grants that were awarded under the previous administration, and we're waiting for an update. So, we've been notified by the US Department of Transportation that we've received the grant, but the new administration will make the final decision as to how that will work out and what priorities the new administration might have going forward. So, we expect that our chances are pretty good. We think this meets the criteria for bringing federal dollars back to the community for a positive purpose, which is to get some of this congestion and traffic out of downtown. However, we will wait and see going forward. I think we've got a phone call scheduled this week for an update. MORPC, the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, is helping us through this process so that we can have good information going forward, how this Raze Grant will actually be awarded. Should note, two communities in the state of Ohio received this grant, Columbus, Ohio and Lancaster, Ohio. So, kudos to, you know, the city for the application we put together, and Linda Berger Disher, I think, did the heavy lifting on this. And she obviously explained our project sufficiently to get this award, so we should be pretty happy with that. So, we will let you know as soon as we know going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions from Councilmember Wolfinger?
Question, Mr. Mayor. Did you determine whether that's a reimbursement grant?
No, it's an eight hundred thousand funded grant for the feasibility study. As far as, no, I have not determined because we're waiting. Essentially, we'll have a contract, and we haven't seen that contract.
Right. So, if it's a reimbursement grant?
Sure.
We'll need to set up a budget.
Absolutely.
Find out where eight hundred thousand is going to come from to pay for it, because we have to expend the money, and then they'll reimburse it.
I suspect it may very well be a reimbursement grant, but we're waiting all that information.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the mayor regarding the ways grant? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the update. Any further new business before council this evening? Hearing none, we'll now move to the announcement of scheduled meetings.
February tenth at six thirty PM here in council chambers. February twenty-fourth, six thirty AM, hearing council chambers.
So, those are, meaning are regularly scheduled city council meetings, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, yes.
Nope, you're all good. Special scheduled meetings, none. Regularly scheduled committee meetings?
Economic develop, or upcoming committee meetings are Economic Development Committee, January thirtieth at seven thirty AM at City Hall eighteen ninety-seven conference room. Safety Committee meet, meeting, February seventh at eight AM at City Hall eighteen ninety-seven conference room. Finance Committee, February tenth at six PM, council chambers. And Law Committee, February fourteenth at seven thirty AM in City Hall eighteen ninety-seven conference room.
Thank you. Reading of bills.
Vista Print twenty-five seventy-eight, MNCO eighty-six fifty-six, and Spotlight Awards and Trophies LLC, thirty-six dollars.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Executive session, there is no need for one this evening, as we had one in the Finance Committee meeting. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I'll make that motion that we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Please stick around and sign your legislation if necessary. Thank you.